We'll be getting underway momentarily, but before we begin, we'd like to do our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge we are hosted on the lands of the Mississaugas of the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee Confederacy and the Wendat. We also recognize the enduring presence of all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples. Thank you. Thank you again for joining us this evening. I'm Ryan Bird and we'll be guiding you through this evening with the help of Craig Snyder, our Executive Officer of Finance. We will be touching on a number of different areas about the budget process, some of the specific numbers, budget timelines, the operating deficit, grants for student needs, which is essentially how we receive money from the Ministry of Education, expenditures from the board, and then potential areas of focus during this year's upcoming budget process. Then finally, we'll get to your questions following the presentation. We'll get to as many as possible. Unfortunately, any school-specific questions are best addressed to the specific school, but we're happy to address as many system questions about the budget process and this upcoming budget for this year. You can ask your questions within the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen. With that, I will throw it over to Executive Officer Craig Snyder to take us through a budget presentation. And again, we'll get to your questions right after that. Craig?
Thank you, Ryan, and good evening, everybody. And I'll start the presentation now. So we'd like to start talking tonight about the balancing of the budget for 2425. So under the Ministry of Education Act, under Section 231, boards are required to submit a balanced budget to the ministry by June 30th of the upcoming school year. Under the regulation, school boards are only allowed to have a 1% deficit up to the max of their reserve balance without requiring special ministry permission. For TSB approximately 1% represents $30 million. However, you can see the chart below. Our reserve estimate at the end of this school year going into 2425 will only be just under $14 million. So we do not have sufficient reserves to carry a 1% deficit. And as you can see in this chart, our working fund balance is actually deplined. There is no working funds, which is generally where you have contingency money available for issues that may happen through the year. So we are definitely have run out of reserves at this point in time. So back in 2022, 23, the board had a 1.4% deficit and was requiring ministry approval to carry that deficit. So as part of that approval, the board approved a three-year deficit recovery plan. The 2425 school year is the third year of that three-year plan. And under that plan, we were committed to having a surplus of 8.2 million in 2425. We are currently working to present a balanced budget to our board. And we plan to do that based on the current GSNs that have been released this school year. And we are required then to make assumptions related to the grants, and we'll talk about those a bit later. And the board believes by passing our budget ahead of the grants release, this will allow it to make decisions based on student need and not on what the funding prepares. So just want to go through the schedule of what's going to happen over the next little while. And as you can see, we had our last meeting with our finance budget enrollment committee on February 14th, where we presented them the high-level areas of consideration, which I'll speak to later in this presentation. The week of February 20th, we're having the two webinars, one tonight and one tomorrow afternoon for our stakeholders to hear about our financial position and some of the things we're considering. We'll also be sharing during this week a budget survey that'll ask questions that the stakeholders can provide feedback directly to us and to the trustees. On March 4th, we're going to have a special impact. And three things will happen at this meeting of primary regarding the budget. The first is we will present the school-based staffing for the upcoming school year. And this is traditionally the time we do it because it takes that time to do the staff allocations via the principals do their staffing committees so they can staff the schools and be ready for September. The next will be, we'll provide feedback from the webinar tonight as well as the budget surveys in the webinar tomorrow. And the third piece of information the trustees will get will be the Financial Facts for the School Board. It's an annual publication we do that presents information around both the type of students, the population of our students, but also around financial, the grants and how we spend the grants. On March 19th, we'll have a special impact where detailed options about will be presented to the Finance Budget Enrollment Committee. Following that, on the 26th of March, there'll be a night for delegations for people who would like to delegate around the budget, and that'll be the only thing on the agenda that evening. March 27th, the recommendation to the board for the operating budget for 2425 will be presented for them to recommend board for approval. And then April 2nd, at the regular board meeting, will be approval of the operating budget for 2425. So our financial position. The board currently has a structural deficit, and this means that we're spending more than we receive in funding each year. And there are several areas that are outside of our control that contribute to the structural deficit. One of the big ones is around our CCP and EI rates that have increased over the last six years without corresponding increase in funding. Our absenteeism of our staff since the pandemic has increased and the changes has not been reflected in the funding that we get for sick leave. And the third major area that has contributed to our funding structural deficit is there's a moratorium on school closures that prevents us from closing schools with excess capacity. This impacts several things. What it impacts the program delivery, we can't offer a full range of programs at small schools like we like to. Impacts the operating costs for caretaking utilities at the schools, as well as our maintenance and renewal costs are impacted when we can't close small schools. So the board also spends more than it receives in funding a number of program areas based on past practice and priorities. And the list here is not exclusive, but it lists some of the areas that we do spend in excess of our funding that we allotted. Special education, continuing education, outdoor education, pools, lunchroom supervision, student nutrition, and school-based safety monitors. Further information on around the gaps in funding can be found in our Financial Facts document and the link there at the bottom of the screen to it. And right now it's the 2223 version. As of March 4th, you'll see the 2324 version of Financial Facts available. So right now in, on January 29th, we present to the Finance Budget Enrollment Committee our projected deficit of $34.8 million. This includes the continued use of proceeds disposition for approximately $15 million. And should the ministry not approve the continued use of proceeds disposition for the sale of properties, the deficit will increase to $50.6 million. So let's talk for a few minutes about the revenue of the board. So the grant for student needs or the GSN that we sometimes refer to is the biggest source of funding for the board. And the GSN mostly is dependent on enrollment. There are some table amounts and set amounts within the grants, but the majority is enrollment-based. Each year, the ministry leases the GSN. It's usually late March to mid-April. We expect this year from what we've heard is going to be mid-April to late April that we'll see it. And then the board can actually calculate with the forms come out with the GSN, the actual projection with based on enrollments of our revenue. We anticipate using the current funding model that the grants for student needs will represent $3.1 billion for next year at this point in time. So the grant for new needs breakdown, this is the components of the grant that make it up. And I won't go through all of them, but I'll do talk about a couple of them. So the biggest was the People Foundation allocation. And this provides for the teachers in the classroom, the ECEs, and some other supports, supplies, absenteeism on teachers, and et cetera. The school foundation grant really looks at the principal, vice-principal, school office allocations based on the enrollment of individual schools. Special education is a sweater grant that supports students with special needs. The language grants are there to support both ESL and FSL, or English as a Second Language and French as a Second Language. And then you can see transportation, teacher qualification experience, administration, school operations, and then some capital grants and other miscellaneous grants. So some of the assumptions that we're doing and the current projection using the current funding model is that we expect to see enrollment increase slightly in students in elementary of 324, average daily enrollment. And average daily enrollment looks at the October and March headcount of students, divides by two, and that's your average daily enrollment. So we're going to see a modest increase of 324 in elementary and approximately 1,100 in secondary is our current projection. In ESL, you're seeing significant increases in both English as a Second Language for both elementary and secondary. And then again, we are using the 2324 funding model to, assuming the benchmarks remain the same, to calculate a current projection for 2425. There's also another source of funding school boards have, which is the Priority and Partnerships Fund. This is a supplement to the GSN and provides limited time funding for ministry programs that the ministry themes it wants to support. They usually come in what I'll call a sweater. They're assert for a special purpose. And you, we sign an agreement with the ministry that will use the funds as outlined in their agreement with them to support whatever program they're for. The third area that is the revenues of the board is about 10% of our revenues is other revenues. And this list is not complete, but it's a major category. So permit revenue and lease revenue from closed sites. We lease out to other school boards or to other organizations. Interest income and revenue based on the interest rates prevailing at the time. And then we have international students that come from other countries that pay fees to attend at TSB. All these revenues and other revenues associated with this category all declined during COVID due to limitations or restrictions that were placed during the pandemic. They haven't returned to those levels yet, but they, we are starting to see returning to pre-pandemic levels and that they're slowly growing. So our estimated expenditures for the coming up for 2425 are $3.7 billion. Instructional expenditures are about 74% of that. So that's your classroom teachers, your principals, your vice principal, your ECEs, your OAs, your paraprofessional support workers, and the supplies and services go along with those in the instructional computers in schools. The building operations and renewal is building the heat, the caretaking, the maintenance, as well as major maintenance under the building renewal category. That's about 21% of our expenditures. And then home-to-school transportation accounts for about 2%, and board administration is about 2.5%. So here's a breakdown of our expenditures in a little bit more detail. And you'll see here that wages and benefits make up a significant portion of our budget. And there are approximately 84% of our budget is salary and benefits. And that salary and benefits includes all the staff, both this school-based and non-school-based. About 65% of our grant for salaries, I should say, benefits are for school-based staff. And the balance is the care, is the facilities department and the other administrative departments that support schools. It's important important to have those supports. You can see what we have for supplies and services. Interest and capital charges are minor. Rental expenses for the things that we rent, fees and contractual services and other expenses, but the vast majority is around the salaries and benefits for all our employee groups. As you would imagine, it's a very labor-intensive organization. So salaries and benefits, as we said a moment ago, are the largest component. As enrollment increases, the number of classroom teachers required increases due to class size regulations, both in the elementary and secondary panel. And these increases in salaries are done through collective agreements at the provincial tables. So we talked earlier, and I would like to just talk about again for a moment, around the cost pressure on benefits. So over the last six years, we've seen the increase in, in the cost for benefits, and we haven't seen a corresponding funding increase. And the chart at the bottom of this page continues to show what the unfunded benefit costs are from 2018, 19 school year until the projected 2425. And you'll see the types of benefit types of what the costs are. And you may ask, well, why is WSIB a negative? And that's because during the pandemic, when people were at home, we didn't see as many claims for WSIB as we're seeing. We're slowly seeing this number creep up as we're back in the workplace and back in our schools. And those costs are increasing, but over the last, this period of time, there was actually a reduction because of the pandemic. So employee absence is a huge concern, and this is replacement cost for our school-based staff and occasional staff. And historically, we've had to increase the budget by 8.5 in 2425 to adjust for the increased usage of absenteeism. And it's projected now that over the 1819 level pre-pandemic, our costs have increased by 13.5 million approximately. So you can see a substantial increase in absenteeism costs through the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic. In transportation, we work with trial Catholic School Board to do a collaborative procurement of services, and we have trial student, a transportation group that administers transportation for both boards. We undertook a competitive process because our contracts come to an end this year. And beginning in September of 2024, we're in a new contract reference. And we anticipate about a 16% increase in our costs from the current contracts. And that represents about a $5 million increase to the board's budget for transportation. Next, I like to talk about all the other expenses that are not significant, but they are important. So year over year, again, we're seeing increases in expenses and primarily due to inflation as well. Contracts are also for things like software maintenance are going up as well with inflation. And they aren't all staying at the same rate as the funding is not kept pace with the inflation we're seeing over the last couple of years, causing further strain on the budget. So potential areas to focus at to balance the budget, one of the areas we're looking at is continuing education. And in this first nugget, you can see all the programs that are supported by continuing education, such as international languages, community programs, secondary credit courses, summer, night, and weekend, summer international student education, adult ESL or else second language courses, and adult day school credit programs. Currently, we spend approximately 6.9 million more on continuing education than the cost to, that were paid for through the funding models. So staff are reviewing these programs and looking for ways to reduce the deficit as much as possible. The next two area is outdoor education. So we recognize the importance of it and by mandating that all students have equal access to quality day and overnight programs. In June of 2001, the board resolved that every student from grades five to eight will have the opportunity to participate in that overnight program. And every student K to eight will have an opportunity to participate in a day program. Historically, the cost operate had been greater than the revenue received. So we received about 4.1 million in fees that we charged the schools for the use. Our expenditures are, and revenues through grants. And our expenditures are 7.2. So we're seeing a deficit of approximately 3.1 of our expenses being greater than the funding and the revenues from fees that we charge. So staff again will be looking at this area to make recommendations of reducing this. And while adhering to the board resolutions about providing opportunities of access for our students. Next is other revenue. So as we talked about other revenues earlier, it being around 10% of our operation, we are looking to see what we could do in this area. So we're looking at our permit revenue or their changes to the permit structure, fee structure that we could take in place. In interest revenue, we're looking to see what the best predictions of the financial, the economy is and what the banking capital handle will do with interest rates, and we're fine-tuning our interest revenue projection. We're also looking at international student fees. And as you probably heard in the media, one of our concerns is around the federal changes to regulations allowing students to come to Canada. We believe it's mostly university, but we do believe it'll have some impact on us. And we're looking at our international student fees as well. Excuse me. We're also looking at all our other revenues to see if they could be adjusted to help offset the deficit we're experiencing. So again, we'll be looking in these areas at minimum to cover the costs associated with these programs for which the revenue is collected. As always, we'll do due diligence, look at central staff to see if there's anything we can do in our central administrative areas. But this has been done in previous years, and we have always tried to keep the cuts as far away from schools as possible. But again, doing due diligence, we'll do one more further review to see if there's any further reductions that are possible without packing the service. Because it's important to understand that our employee services department, the finance department, our purchasing, our IT departments, all those administrative departments are there to support the schools. And so that level of support is important that we provide to the schools so the schools could support our learners. We're also looking, as we talked about staff absenteeism, we're going to look at the ways we can adjust that and reduce those costs and increase that are increased over the last several years. So staff are reviewing strategies helped in this area as well. The next area is a renewal cost charged to operations. As a result of our absenteeism and vacant positions, as well as the increased cost of materials due to inflation, we have been spending about $6 million more in the renewal grant than the funding provides. That 6 million has to be through the operational budget. So we're working with our facilities colleagues to look to see how staff can review the anticipated costs for 2425 to determine how to reduce these costs that are being charged to the operation while maintaining safe environments for our students and staff. We're also going to look at all those areas that exceed funding. It's a good practice that we review these areas to see what we could do to address issues and to ensure that we're applying value and fully providing the, being the board's priorities, obligations, and resolutions in operations. So is there a reduction in services in this area could be potentially result in a range of impacts, but we're going to look at those areas and, and review them carefully. So that's the end of our formal presentation tonight. I appreciate, I hopefully I didn't use too many acronyms. And I'll turn it back to Ryan now, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Craig. We know that's a lot of information to digest over a short period of time, but it is important to set that context for this year's budget. So you know where we've come from, where we're going. A great resource during the entire budget process is the TDSB website at tdsb.on.ca/budget. You'll find a recording of this virtual town hall meeting on there tomorrow, along with links to reports going through our Finance Budget and Enrollment Committee throughout the budget process. You'll also see more information on how you can have your say from these virtual town hall meetings, how to delegate before the committee, and in the coming days, a budget survey that will be going out to gather feedback from our school communities. We'll be updating that website again, tdsb.on.ca/budget throughout the budget process so that members of the TDSB community can get the latest information available. With that, we're happy to take any of your questions you may have. Again, you can type your questions into the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Depending on the number of questions, we'll try to get to as many as possible. And, and if not, we can simply conclude, but we'll try to get to as many questions as possible. If you can please enter them in the Q and A section. Craig, while we wait for some more questions, I wanted to speak to you about this. I mean, you mentioned off the top, you talked about the areas of the budget, the options that are being looked at. When will we hear back on more specific dollar amounts, programs that are being looked at for consideration as part of the budget process?
Thank you, Ryan. So what we're planning to do is on the Friday, March 8th, before March break, we'll have our formal report up for our trustees for their March 19th. So at that point, it'll be on our website, the report the trustees will be receiving and reviewing at their March 19th.
Thank you for that. And the questions are starting to come in, Craig. Do we have, what was the total cost of staff absences in the last year? How does that compare to pre-pandemic? Is that, are we noticing a significant difference between pre-COVID and post-COVID, if you will?
So yeah, so as I said in our presentation, we are seeing an increase. The pre-pandemic was around 138 million a year was our supply cost. And as I said in the slide deck, it's got approximately up 14 million since then.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, what are these other areas where costs exceed revenue? Are there? What are the other areas? You mentioned some of them, like I think, I believe you referenced special education, transportation, a number of areas, but are those the, the most significant areas or are there other areas as well?
So I think one of the biggest areas that wasn't on the list because they were more program areas is the, the gap in salaries and benefits. So as we talked about in the slide, we showed that there was about $48 million differential in our benefits that hasn't been funded by similar increases to the ministry education. There's also been a historic gap in, in some of our salary levels. And again, just for history, the school boards used to negotiate their own agreements several years ago. 2017, I believe, the Ministry of Education took over at Central Table negotiations for wages and benefits. And those, so it crystallized some of our overspending, but in our teacher line, as you'll see in the Financial Facts, when you take both the salaries and benefits, we're about 4% underfunded to what a teacher costs are. But the benefits and the, and the benefits are the big driver. We're about 1 to 2% over our salary benchmark for teachers. But the benefits and the salary gaps are there as well as the ones that we listed there. And there's several other smaller ones for program areas that are underfunded.
When you talk about Canada Pension Plan, WSIB, employment insurance, that kind of thing?
Yes, and long-term disability costs.
And those just we're, and is it correct, we continue to be above the benchmarks that are funded from the ministry? Is that what is happening there?
CCP and EI are federal programs, so the federal government sets the rates. And the provincial government has not provided funding increases to match what the federal government has set out of those. LGDI, WSIB are costs that the board incurs. And as you'd expect, they're going up with the pandemic and things, and they're not fully being recouped by increased funding for benefits from the ministry.
Okay, thank you for that. Next question up, is the TDSB looking to cut, cut staff from some schools to make up for some of this deficit?
So I would say that what we aren't looking at cutting staff directly in schools, we're looking at making sure that our class so our support are appropriate to the enrollment at the schools. So as we talked about one of the slides, we talked about as a classes, if we gain enrollment, we need to add more teachers. Similarly, if there's less enrollment, we need less teachers and/or support. So we're trying to make sure that staffing supports are aligned to our students that we have in the schools.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, how many schools are looking at closing due to this budget? I, I think that's, currently there's a moratorium on school closures and put in place by the Ministry of Education a number of years ago. So to my knowledge, that's not something that's being considered as part of this particular budget.
Right, yes, there is currently a moratorium in place, so we cannot close schools at this point in time. So that's not part of this current budget process.
Okay, next question. Parents in the TDSB feel that current funding is insufficient to keep our kids safe and properly educated. Given that the TDSB voted to accelerate the budgeting process this year, do you see this as an opportunity to build a budget that is better aligned with student needs?
And that's our, that is our intention. We, we feel that there's a, a funding gap as well. And so our trustees have asked that we build this budget based on student needs. We have a structural deficit. We have to address it. But they are asking us to build the budget. So we are, they're aligning our resources to student needs as best we can with the funding model.
Okay, this comes back to a question or some information that you provided as far as the, the difference between the money we receive from the government and what we fund. So this question, what happens when a budget area like special education is overspent by the TDSB? For example, if the provincial government, or the, the provincial grant for special ed is $100 million, and yet the TDSB is required to spend $150 million to serve the approved needs. Is it mandatory, is it, it is a mandatory provincial program? Could the school board go back to the province for a top-up to fit the actual costs as required? I know that's something that over the years, I, I remember the, I know the Board of Trustees, among others, have, have appealed to the government to, to better fund different areas according to the need within the board?
Yes, and I, I have to give full compliments to our trustee. They've always been advocating for additional funding to support all the, the various needs, whether it be special education or other programs in the school, the, the schools. But to answer the question, the special education grant is sweated, so it must be spent on special education. When a school board spends more than their funding, they have to cut back somewhere else to offset that. And while, if you go to our Financial Facts, you'll see over years, we've been overspent. Some of it has been built into previous decisions by the board. Similarly, with the cost of teachers, it's been built in over years because it's the, the salary part at least has been consistent over the years. But it does mean that when you're having an area you're funding above the, the funding or you're expending more than the funding, you do have to make decisions on where you're going to take that money fund to balance the budget.
Okay, thank you for that question. Next up, as you mentioned, absenteeism has increased post-pandemic. What work is being done to address it and mitigate future financial pressures due to the issue? I, I know our, our people and culture department, Employee Services is actively working on that together with your team, but do you have any high-level things that are being done?
No, at this point, we are just, we're, we're doing the analysis and our people and culture are looking at it. They're doing a reorganization to help better support all services to our employees. And more information will come out on March 19th when we have our detailed options to balance.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, immigration levels are going to increase from 2024 to 2025. So are they going to build more schools? How are they going to address this? I know like the TDSB specifically, as far as total capacity versus the number of schools. We do have room in some areas, but in other areas where actually they're, they're, the, the schools are quite full. So it really depends on, on where the need is. And then that would be, Craig, submitted as part of our capital budget if we, if we notice that coming? So it really depends on on where the need is, and then that would be Craig submitted as part of our capital budget if we if we notice that coming.
Yes, uh, you're right, uh, Ryan, that we do overall the system have capacity. It's not always in the places where students are arriving. And that's part of the reason you'll see portables on some sites for several years. But where there's a long term overcapacity of school, that's where we'll put a cat, what's called a capital priority submission to the government. To do an extension to a school where there is no viable option either to change boundaries, to put more portables on. Uh, but those are the first two options we always look at, but the long term option versus staying growth. Is uh either a rebuild or in addition to a school.
Thank you for that question. Will the student needs budget include new costs budgeted for children's right to read, including implementing recommendations on the Ontario Human Rights Commission? Right to read report. Craig, I don't know if you have that level of of uh specific information, but I know staff are actively working, have assessed that, provided information to staff. But is there any uh budget line item at this point that you could share?
Uh, thanks, Ryan, for the question. I think right now there is no specific budget. We've been asked from our literacy department. They're still working on plans to support literacy and the right to read. And a more full information will come through to reports to trustees. So I suggest watching our website and reports to the program, the school services committee. Where there'll be updates on the right to read as well as other academic programs.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, this question talks about uh social workers, uh social workers, the number of schools that are assigned. Um, just a challenging to meet uh meet as teams, slowing down the process of supporting students and families. They're asking, is the T D S B allocating money to hire more social workers to have timely uh interventions? I know something, I know that's, I know staffer are keenly aware of the supports available for students, but I'm not sure if at this point in time. That would be something that would be dealt with next month as far as discussing whether staff should be added or what have you.
Yes, that right now, uh, working with our uh paraprofessional team. We're looking at what's needed and and how to distribute the resources. And if there's a need that is identified, it'll be brought forward on the March nineteenth uh at that committee.
Okay, thank you for that. Again, we're taking your questions. If you'd like to put them into the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen, we're going to get to as many as possible. Um, right now, um, I'm just looking right here. So will you release the budget uh to the public before you receive the provincial funding amount? Uh, I think, Craig, the idea is that we will be the budget process based on some assumptions and based on funding from previous years. Uh, will be approved by the the T D S B or is anticipated to be approved. Um, and then we receive the the formal amount from the ministry. Is that how that works?
Yes, we will be presenting uh March nineteenth, our options to balance the budget. And whatever those options will be in the dollar amounts for some of the areas that we talked about tonight. Then at the late March, the March twenty seventh, by my days right in my mind. The F D A committee will bring a file report to them on. The options to balance and what recommendations staff are making. They'll obviously, as trustees, you feel to modify it and recommend on to board the options to balance. And on April second, the board will approve the operating budget. And through that whole process, the budget reports and the uh the budget itself will be a part of the public documents that come forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Again, just looking, uh, if we have any additional questions, uh, one person is asking about the funding for supply teachers. Craig, that is really, that's when it comes to the the cost, a replacement cost that you mentioned earlier. I think that continues to rise, but it it really is something necessary that we must fund because the whole idea is that. We have to make sure the classes are covered. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's exactly what we have to do. That's one of the challenges is that. The rate of absenteeism versus the funding for the province do not match, but we are committed to having. A an adult in front of every student in every school.
Okay, uh, and next up, there are some students with special needs where they are assisted by child and youth workers or special needs assistants. Um, at this point, are there any cuts for these positions? I I I don't believe we've reached that level of getting into that specificity. Uh, of different positions or none.
No, we haven't got into that level specificity yet. We do believe that our special education needs are significant and our. Our current multi-year strategic plan as well as one's paths in the past would direct us this area that we would be. Trying to make cuts in, but again, we have to go through that process to be definitive.
Thanks, Craig. Uh, next up, the budget has to balance yearly. So if there's a deficit multiple years, would the province address that by making lump sum support? I know it's something that the trustees have appealed for consistent funding that matches the needs of the board, but I I don't know what that would entail.
So I guess the best, so just to kind of go back a step. So like I said earlier in the presentation, this is a three year recovery plan that. We had in place. This is the third year. We've been using our reserves to pay for. The the cost of each board in the last couple of years. And those reserves are running out, as you saw in the presentation tonight. So we don't have sufficient resources to keep running, so to speak, the credit card. So now we have to make those difficult decisions to eliminate the structural deficit, so we're in a balanced position. And so there is uh the less the ministry comes out with new funding that we're not aware of in the grants. Uh, we are expected to try to balance our books with the current funding model.
Okay, thank you for that, Craig. And we have actually answered all the questions uh that have been inputted into the screen this evening, so. Um, I guess I'll just briefly recap uh right now. Um, obviously, this is the first of two virtual town hall uh budget town hall meetings to discuss the twenty four twenty five budget. If you missed any of this evening's town hall and want to watch more, you missed one of the the answers. We are recording this and we'll post it to the T D S B website. We also have another similar webinar scheduled for tomorrow afternoon at one thirty. Through this year's budget process, I again want to say the T D S B website is a great resource for more information. T D S B dot O N dot C A slash budget. There you'll find information on the budget process, links to board reports for the budget, which goes through our finance, budget and enrollment committee. You'll also see more information on how you can have your say. This is critically important from these virtual town hall meetings, how to delegate before the uh committee. And in the coming days, a budget survey to gather feedback from our school communities. Again, that's T D S B dot O N dot C A slash budget. And it will be updated throughout the budget process. Finally, our thanks to Stacy, Ronny, Sri and Rajini for their help behind the scenes this evening and for making this evening possible. Thank you so much for joining us this evening on behalf of Craig Snyder and myself. Have a great rest of your evening.